Okay, Tab A, background checks and references on city manager candidates.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to do public comments?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilman. Um, there's no- Public com- Even though I missed it.
Oh, number thirty, third line.
Is there another one? Below adoption of agenda.
Oh, this one that came out after the amended one.
The amendment, amendment of the amended-
This is the amended one.
Please come forward this time.
Hello, my name is Matthew Muntan. I believe I know most of y'all up here. I just wanted to take a moment to speak on the zoning board of appeals. I guess the, and my understanding was today was a work session, but I guess I understood wrong, so I apologize for that. I understand, I believe, I guess there's a notion among the council to dissolve the zoning board of appeals. As a member of the zoning board of appeals, I believe that we do good work on that, on that board. To my knowledge, most jurisdictions have a zoning board of appeals. And the jurisdiction of the board is usually limited to appeals from administrative decisions that staff would make, so where an applicant disagrees with a staff decision, or in some cases where there's a variance issue. I believe we had one case where there was a parking variance issue. We had a case recently where an applicant requested variance from the grandfather clause in order to build a larger sign. And then, now, my experience in other jurisdictions is that our decisions are final unless the applicant or another interested party appeals them, and they would appeal that to the city council. And that's consistent with what I understand, and I, that's consistent also with my understanding of how our zoning board of appeals works in Villarica. I'm not really concerned with what your thoughts are, but I would be willing, as a member of the zoning board of appeals, willing to answer any questions you may have. But, to my knowledge, I know friends, for example, I'm for sure that Hiram has a zoning board of appeals. They actually use Paulding County's zoning board of appeals for these matters. Paulding County also has a zoning board of appeals. I would certainly assume that Douglasville and Douglas County have a zoning board of appeals for these kind of matters. And really, at the end of the day, it just takes less off y'all's plate. It just takes it off y'all's plate, and less is contentious issue to where an interested party would want to appeal it, and then you all will have the final decision-making power, subject to, of course, the applicant or the interested party's right to bring litigation and so forth. But I just wanted to make myself available to answer any questions. Thank you.
John, I'm going to speak in opposition to the-
Thank you, John.
Sign sheet, John. You draw a rail.
Record is 115, Maple Valley Drive, Villarica, Georgia. I served on the last zoning board of appeals when it was disbanded approximately twenty-two years ago. So, yes, we did have it in existence. The reason why it was disbanded was there was nothing coming to it. So, everything that was, that had come through us, was actually then going on to, automatically to council. So, it was deemed to be irrelevant, and it was phased out. So, the statements that it never has existed, and it was of no use, is really immaterial, is not used correctly by the administration. And the administration should go back and put this back in, and have this as a, as a sounding board, and as a review board for issues that do become turned down or denied by the, by the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody else? Okay, if not, we will close the public comments portion of the meeting. Moving on to the meeting itself, Tab A, background checks and references of city manager candidates. Mr. McLean.
Mr. Mayor- ...to how we would go about interviewing and considering city manager candidates. As you all know, that's become a topic of great interest in, in some public debate within the, in the city and the community. At our last meeting, I think I made the statement that, well, we would take all of what we, we defined as the tier-one candidates, which are people who applied, who had previous city managerial experience, and the tier-two candidates, which are people who had experience in municipal government, but perhaps in a different area, either as planning and zoning, or public works, or financial capacities. And, and of that, we had, you know, a large number of people, maybe sixty, seventy, or something like that, in what we call the tier-one and tier-two candidates. Maybe less than that. I don't, I don't, don't hold me to a number, but it was a bunch of them. And trying to, because we want to go out of our way to be fair to everybody, and to make sure that people can observe that we have an open process, how difficult it was going to be for this board, this council, to attempt to interview, you know, forty-five to sixty people. Assuming that you give each candidate an equal amount of time, and my experience has been interviews, you know, generally you're taking no less than an hour, you, you would be committing as a, as a board to a huge number of person-hours to the interview process. And, and I recognize that the reality of that, that's unwieldy, and probably impossible, since people have jobs, you got, this is not the only thing you're doing in your life. So, next step was try and figure out how other people have done this process. We don't have to completely reinvent the wheel to hire a city manager. Upon doing some research, I came across that a number of cities in Georgia have used executive search firms in order to narrow down its pool of candidates for a city manager position. One, one specifically that I can, okay, I just tried to find somebody, because I don't know anybody personally, and I did find a company that sounded good upon first hearing about it. It's called Underwood and Company. The specific person that does the work is Tom, is a person by the name of Tom Berry. So, I reached out to Mr. Berry to find out, you know, what type of services he provided, and what the cost of it would be. I think I provided you with his response to me as to what his cost to the city of Villarica would be in interviewing these candidates. I mean, there may be others out there. I, I don't know. This one I have found. I wanted to do some due diligence on it also, and I have, I bought what I could find available through the, the internet anyway, on him, and it mainly consists of other, other cities that he has worked in. The city of Albany, he was very involved, Camilla, Cornelia, I think, several other cities that you'll see in here. I had, I've got a couple of calls in. He's recommended by GMA also, and there's, in fact, an article I have from, that was in the GMA publication. I don't remember seeing it last June, but in there about his role as a, an executive recruiter within the GMA, Georgia Municipal Association fold. So, I'm going to provide that to you this morning. I bought a couple of extra copies for the media to look at, and anybody else that wants to. I did specifically follow up and call the city attorney in LaGrange, who I know personally, a gentleman by the name of Jeff Todd, and he is, was involved in the process of hiring the city manager in LaGrange. Mr. Todd couldn't speak more highly of him and the service that he had rendered to them, about how easy he made the process, and what, what he did was, you know, go through this and, you know, narrow it down to ten or fifteen people that could be considered, and then maybe narrow it down to five that you actually bring in to interview. And he said it was extremely well managed. The, the cost of it is, in my opinion, is not, was a lot less than what I anticipated it would be. So, that's, that's what I wanted to say about this. I'll go ahead and pass these out, just so that you'll have some background information And it's going to, at least, whether you use this company, or we go out and find some other one, it, it seems like that's an organized and well-thought-out process on hiring a city, city manager.
Everybody got one over there? One, two, three. You're good? Okay, good.
I, I don't know if you want to take these things and review them some, and, you know, act on it at the next meeting, or- That's wholly up to you. I mean, we could, we can, if you would be satisfied, we could, we could launch forward and authorize the contract with him tonight, today.
This packet you just sent around, is this all on this one fellow?
Yes. Yeah, it's all on Mr. Berry, and most of it relates to the other cities where he was involved in the, the city manager hiring process. His background, as best I can tell it, is that he, he for a long time served as city manager, and, but, he, somewhat like our last interim city manager prior to the one we have now, has made somewhat of a profession about going around and serving as an interim city manager, and during that, recruiting city managers. Well, he's now apparently gotten to the point in his career where he's not even serving as the interim city managers. He's just doing the executive search part of it altogether. You know, I, I, I can't personally vouch for him. I don't know the person at all, but the recommendations for him are good. The, the type of criteria that we're looking for, which is somebody that is, appears to be competent, has done this before. You'll see in the packet that, in some of these cities where he has served as the executive search consultant, that minority candidates have been hired for the positions, which, which tells me that there's, does not appear on, on the face of it to be any type of action that would discriminate against anyone. And those are the type of things that I was looking for, to see if there was anything that could be found that would disqualify him from serving as.
David, I appreciate you doing the legwork on this, and actually, several recommend- and I certainly want to hear the council's input, but, but I think it's a, a good thing to do. I think it's important for the public to know- ... And so, when we get a list of how many y'all-
Yes, and he, he, that's part of his job, is to, you know, make sure that we know what all the skeletons in the closet are on every candidate, and let's be honest, we all have that. Every one of us, but, and we'll at least know.
And that was my concern. I, I knew we could send the applications and look at, you know, qualifications, where they'd been before, and do limited reference, but I was real concerned about us trying to do extensive background and reference checks.
Well, and, you know, the truth of the matter is, is what evaluations everybody- and we all do things differently, and if one group that's, you know, that's paid to do this, is looking at it, then they're looking strictly at qualifications and using a standardized-type process. So, I think that's, that's important.
Didn't we also save some money? Sorry. Didn't we also save some money because we've already done part of the process?
Yeah, his original quote to me was for, you know, three to five thousand dollars, I think, but he said that he, part of, a big part of that was getting in the applications, advertising for the position. So, I had told him that, well, we've already done that. We've got a pretty good pool of people to, to look at, and that's not to say that he might not know somebody that ought to be added into the pool that we didn't know about, but he said, "Well, I don't have, you know, in that situation, I don't have to advertise, I don't have to, to get you a pool of candidates if you already got one." So, the price now is much less than what it would have been had he had to do the whole project.
So, let me ask you a question, David. As you said, we've got about forty-five that have been handed to us so far, and actually, they trickle in a couple of weeks already. So, would it be our job to narrow that number down to some number before we give it to him, or would we give him forty-five of them? And then, because he has a fee on here, does it include, because if you go a little further down, it, it says that that includes one background check. Now, is that a first background check on everybody we send in, or is that one background check?
I, I don't know of answer to that question. I'll have to figure that out. I took it, maybe wrongly, but I took it that this was a flat fee for doing the whole process.
Okay. So, would we, would we want to narrow our forty-five down to some number before we give it to him, or, or would we want to give him the forty-five and let him, or narrowing it down himself, and get us to a number, let's say, five or ten, whatever we decide? I mean, that's-
Yeah, my, my thought was, you know, if it is indeed a flat fee, we give them the whole forty-five, and maybe-
Well, that's my thought, too.
Maybe the tier-three candidates, too.
Our money's worth.
You know, these are the ones that we believe have got managerial experience, these are the ones that we believe have got city experience, these are the ones that in our, you know, untrained eye don't have any relevant experience, but here they are, and, you know, if you want to leaf, leaf through all of them, do it.
And, and I think if that's what we're talking about in this proposal, then that's what I would be in favor of as well. I've, I've been through all of these applications, and, you know, you got good and bad in every single one of them. So, I think without having the background information, it's hard to, I could pick somebody out today, I've got a top two or three already, but then if their background, in fact, we know we had to eliminate a few, at least two, based on background checks that just the chief had, had discovered on his own. So, I'd be in favor of giving him as a larger number as possible, and letting him bring them down to a manageable number.
It's interesting you say forty-five. I'm sitting here looking at the list. I was given the sixteen tier-one and twenty-three tier-two. I don't know what happened to those others. Apparently, I didn't get a hold of them.
Well, they've been trickling in, and that was just an estimate.
Yeah, I, I don't know the specific number. If it's sixteen and twenty-three, then that's-
Sixteen, twenty-three is thirty-nine.
I'll amend my number to thirty-nine.
Yeah, I had a few more in my box today.
But David, if someone else, I mean, the, the process is still open.
The trickle process is just, is too slow.
That's something else we were going to talk about. We were going to talk about closing this.
Right. We were going to talk about closing it back at the time when, when we were going to be responsible at this point. I don't, I don't know of any great reason why we have to close it off. Again, I, I don't know. I haven't talked to him to the extent that, given that he's in this profession, and has been doing this for other cities, you know, maybe he has in the back of his mind that there was somebody who didn't get hired in Albany or LaGrange that might work out great in Villarica, and I'd hate to preclude him from bringing that person in and saying, "Hey, did you know Villarica was hiring? You'd fit great there."
That's a good point.
I feel real comfortable with the report you've given on this company. I know a lot of times you want to have choice. I really believe in shopping around, but I also believe that, in some ways, I don't want to rush and not do what we should, but we can't mosey along in this process.
We can't drag this out.
Yeah, I'd really like to see us move forward with getting, securing that third party. That'll be twenty bucks, chief.
A lot did, I did ask for us to have more of a choice, but I, I am satisfied with what you've provided here, that this is a reputable company that has been tried and tested, so I'd be inclined to, to agree with them. But I would like us to have an idea of how the process is going to go, because I think that without a plan, we're, we're just floating along, and we, we really have got to have a plan for this.
What the process is, and also what the real cost's going to be, because we've done some of the work. So, it's, that sounds like it's an open number right now.
I, I think he's amenable to come in and meet him with, with you directly, so that, you know, you don't have to hear it from me, you can hear it from him. If you're, if y'all are interested in proceeding, I will see if I can find out when he would be available on one of our meeting times to actually be here, or even if I could set up a special meeting to do it.
And how do we engage him? We get him on contract?
Just through a contract. I, I think he sent me a simple contract.
So, you're, you're saying he'd be willing to come in, and we could ask him those questions, and then formulate a plan with him, and better understand what he provides, and what he's willing to do, and that, for that amount of money, and-
And what the timeframe is.
Yeah, it's interesting, if you read one of the, the article out of the GMA publication, is that he and his wife apparently travel around in a big RV vehicle.
I saw that, though.
And so, he, he might even come and just stay for a while.
Park right on the side of my house, there you go. Right next to mine, now, look at that.
I would just like-
I'd like to see us submit our questions through David, our city attorney, and let him draw up a contract that we can vote on to get this thing going.
Yeah, I, I think this document that you have, that he sent out, is his contract that he uses, which is really very simple, and, and somebody did ask a very good question about the background checks. One background check is included in the above fee. Additional background checks will be reimbursed at cost. I, I need to find out whether or not that one background check is, you know, per final candidate, or whether it's just one candidate.
I, I agree with that, and, and I don't, you know, obviously, I've been very vocal that I don't want this process drug out. I, I want that seat filled, but we need, I need to understand the contract and what it's going to cost, and, and before we make a decision like that. So, is it possible to get this answer today?
I can, I can, while we're here, I think we're good.
Can we get it right now?
Yes, Stacy could call him right now.
You could do that. Maybe we could table this for a little bit, we'll move on and, and come back, and maybe we can make a decision at this-
Well, and one-
I wouldn't want the number to be above ten. I probably don't want it below five.
I was thinking ten myself.
Ten is reasonable.
Is that, Mr. Early, does that sound good to you, ten?
Not over ten.
Okay. Okay, then, we'll, we'll move on to-
As you all know, we've been searching, we've had the position open for quite a while on the community development manager, and city is, we all agree that we're in desperate need of getting that position filled a year ago. It, it's a critical position within the city. We're starting to feel the growth come back, and it's very important to fill that position. Here's the operative facts as I know them. We have advertised a position we've received in. My understanding is at least five really good, six, six applicants, but, and again, Stephanie has reviewed them. And I've heard other people. I heard Mr. Jackson when he was here, and I've heard Chief Mansour say that many of them seem to have very good qualifications. I haven't looked at any of them myself, so I don't know. As I understand, there's really two questions that are facing you right now. One of those is what is the, the job requirements for us? And there, there has been some debate as to whether or not it's mandatory that we have five years of experience, or seven years of experience. That's within the power of the council to, to decide that issue. You know, the, the, the job descriptions have changed over the years. It's within our power to set what they are. My belief, in, in the specific question related to whether or not, you know, one, one person who finally had that position is now qualified for the position, it's my belief that, that, that she is qualified, and, and should be in the pool of applicants to be considered. So, that's answering one question as to whether or not you have to have five or seven years. I, I believe five years is the appropriate standard, given our past practice here in the city. Then what, what, how do you move on beyond that? We've got people who've filed an application, who, again, appear to be qualified. I think somebody needs to look at all of them and do the fair process of looking at them, deciding if they are qualified. Those that we are qualified need to be interviewed. I think we owe it to them, if they have applied and they are qualified, to interview them as we would in any job hiring position, and then hire the best qualified candidate.
This normally doesn't fall under the preview of the council. This is normally the city manager's job.
It, it is, and that's one of the decisions as to whether or not to task, you know, whether or not y'all are comfortable with tasking Chief Mansour in, in performing that function, to, to conduct the interviews and make a recommendation to, to hire the person.
That's part of the reason I asked for this to be put on the agenda. There is a massive hole in community development, and it's building. It's not getting better. It's building because there's not somebody there to run all that.
...now, and he said that the fee quoted only includes one background check of your final candidate. So if you want to do more, like if you come up with a list of top three, you can do more, it'd just be an additional expense. He uses an outside firm for that, and it's generally between $200 and $300 for that, depending on how deep you want to dig. So...
Okay, so we won't be, thank you.
Okay.
So we won't be sending 45 or 39 of those over there.
Probably the way, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here, but I think we send all of them over to him.
For review?
But we don't for full background. No, not for full background, then let him sort it down to the 10 that he wants to send back to us. Maybe I'll pick out five.
Now, can I speak on this, sir?
Absolutely.
And, you know, those come out fine, there's no problem there. So I'm not sure exactly what kind of background check he's talking about. I mean, is he gonna be doing a complete background where he's calling references and all that, or is he doing that up front with all of them, or what?
He said this was an outside firm, and he said you could have your local police department do some of the criminal part. He did say he normally recommends having an outside group do it because your police department ends up reporting to him, so just to have that separation. But that's, he said that's fine if you want to do that. But he mentioned on this that he, they'll check their education and like make sure they got their masters and that kind of thing. So is that kind of in-depth?
Credit check, credit checks.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Did you understand, Stacy, that he would take any number of initial applications for his own review, to then narrow those down to a number that we would then narrow down to the ones we want him to do this extended service on? Is that what you understood?
Well, he just, we specifically talked about the background check, so he said he usually does this extended background check, and he gets an outside firm to do it, and it's usually just your top final candidates. Usually in that 14-day review period after you publish who they are and have that waiting period, it's those candidates. And some people, some cities just want to do the final candidate with this extensive...
Would that be the last three? Because I think that's when you had to publish.
We would do at least the last three.
Yeah.
You know, you're probably on the last three, so maybe you're talking about spending another $400 to $600.
And then once the count...
I don't even know that you have to interview all 10.
We narrow it down to five, and those are the ones we're interviewing. I thought that was the way.
Okay, so we narrow it down to five from the original...
As a meeting, we have to bring it down to five.
Right, and then when we announce our final candidate, then those...
We have five in case one of them rolls out because of that.
You can almost count on one of them, once we tell them that you're one of our final candidates, and we're gonna send you your name to Ken and Prissy. Some of them are gonna say, "Wait a minute, I don't want my employer to..."
Maybe not.
... I've looked at it, and I like it because it is so simple. And the price, you know, the price that we're paying for it, I'll say it almost seems too good to be true, so, but having looked at... The motion should be that the council moves to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Underwood and Company for the executive search for city manager.
So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Number one is road paving.
Mr. Mayor, it's you, the council, the city, and I'm sure the whole world knows, the city of Villarica has some issues with the road paving project that took place here in the city within the last several months. Mr. Zorbanos has been taking the lead for the city on dealing with that issue. And where we stand right now, and Pete, if I say anything wrong, you tell me, where we stand right now is that the city has expressed our belief that the project is not completed, A, is not completed to our satisfaction, B, and not completed in compliance with the DOT standards, three. We have notified the contractor and also our design engineer, or the engineer who was supervising the contract, that that is our belief. We have been told that the punch list that the contractor is supposed to complete has not yet been completed, and we certainly agree with that. Not only has his punch list not been completed, but other issues that we believe need to be completed haven't been. So we've been informed that as soon as he believes that the punch list has been completed, that we would have a meeting scheduled with the engineer and with the road paving company to have a final sit-down about the roads. We anticipate having that meeting within the next several weeks. We are outlining and categorizing all of our problems with the roads, so that we will be able to tell them specifically what we believe the problems are that need to be corrected. Once that list is compiled, certainly you know, Pete and I can share that with all of y'all. You can add on anything else you think is a huge problem. At that meeting, we'll either come to some type of resolution as to what's gonna be done to fix what we perceive to be the problems, and they'll agree to it. Or if they don't agree to it, there is a mechanism within our contract where we can contest their statement that the job is complete. And if we do so, then the matter goes first to a mediation, and if that doesn't resolve things, then it goes up to the next step of an arbitration. We're gonna do everything within our power to avoid having to go through a contested proceeding on these roads, but I think our city's position right now is that we entered into a contract to get a job done, and it hadn't been done, and certainly not done to the specifications to which it should have been done.
David, I want to ask a question, too. It's been brought to my attention that the...
I think an email to Mr. Zorbanos would be a good way to handle that. If you know of something, if you see something, say something.
That's the complaints I'm getting, too, is that the driveway is, there's a big bump now. When they come out of the driveway onto the road, they're bumping up on the road. It's not a smooth transition.
I guess my question is, though, if we do it, we being the city, if we get Pete to do it, or Pete gets someone else to do it, there's gonna be an expense involved. And, you know, I don't want to, while I want the safety issue to be taken care of, that's first and foremost, I want to make sure that we also have a chance to recover that cost, if indeed there is a cost in doing that.
Those type of issues, we ought to identify them, so that we can make those known to the paving company as soon as we can. I don't know that we have done that yet, because those items are items on our list of things to get fixed. But if they are safety issues, we probably need to not wait any longer to convey that list to them.
That's my concern. Chief, is that something you could direct staff to go around and...
So you want us to document the ones that we believe are unsafe, but we don't need to go in and repair them yet? We're gonna let them know, and it's gonna be part of the...
Punch list.
Punch list are considerations, okay.
Are they even doing anything on the punch list? I noticed on South Carroll, the unique line that went down the metal has turned into dashes now. That's...
Yes, I think as early as today, I noticed that down South Carroll, they've blacked out the wild, rambling, white edge line.
That's true, yes, and I noticed that, too.
And as we speak, they're laying down the center line on Rockmart Road. So before, as I came here, they had a crew out there that was trying to do the center line stripe. So they're trying to get the striping done. You know, they had mentioned in some correspondence that when they got done with the striping, they thought that they were complete, and they would anticipate having a meeting. I think...
That was my concern, what you just said, that they're doing striping, and if what's under the striping is not okay, and you're doing that...
I'll tell you what concerns me, and David, you just laid out a process, and it sounds reasonable, and this has been going on for a long time. And I think that what concerns me is that South Carroll Road is quickly deteriorating. I mean, there are serious potholes forming on South Carroll Road, and now you're talking about over here at Rockmart, they're putting the finishing stripes on. This whole thing seems...
Makes no sense.
...incredibly backwards. And I think we need to get a handle on this quickly, or we're gonna be left holding the bag, or the taxpayers are. And I think, to the mayor's point, we can't allow that. And I know you just laid out a plan, David, but I think we've got to be firm on this. We've got to move.
We have a bond. I mean, I realize it's backed up, but how long, how long are we supposed to live with this before it starts getting corrected? That's my, and if there's a safety issue, then how long's the safety issue gonna drag out before it gets corrected? I mean, it's gonna be after somebody gets hurt?
We're...
I know it's not, I know it's not your fault.
We're in the process right now of compiling a report with utilizing a third-party engineer to give us some technical expertise there. And he's indicated that that would be finalized by May 1st. Of course, I know that's out there another week or so, but at that point in time, I think if we gather in-house and we discuss the issues as we see it, then at that point in time, we can sit down with the engineer, Falcon Design Engineer, and H.E.H. paving, and then we can go over a comprehensive list, if you will, of all the deficiencies as we see it.
So did you say an outside consultant is doing this independent report? My only question would be, didn't GDOT kind of do something like that for us?
Yes. I met with two representatives of GDOT March 29th, and we went over all the roads in question. They're very good and willing to give their technical input as a resource. However, it gets a little ticklish where they really can't recommendations of third-party people to do certain things. And so we benefited from their technical expertise and what their observations were. And we're keeping, we're gonna temper that with our own third-party analysis of the same situation, compile all that together.
Okay. Thank you.
The standard on this, under our contract, is that the roads and the paving has to meet Georgia DOT standards. We need to be, we being the city, need to be able to document that they either do or do not meet that standard. You know, as laypeople, we can go out there and say, "Look at it, say that's an ugly road." But I don't know whether or not it meets Georgia DOT standards or not. Maybe DOT standards allow for ugly roads. But we have contacted professional help that can tell us whether they meet the standards or not. If they don't, we're not gonna back off of making them meet the standards. If they do meet the standards, then we don't have anything to complain about.
Well, that contract was quite long, and I understand about the standards, and there was some indication that maybe they did not meet the standards. But there were specifications in that contract, too, that they were supposed to meet on the city's behalf. And that's where my concern would be, outside of the GDOT standards. Maybe some of it does meet, maybe a lot of it does. But there are other specifications in that contract, and I, I think the city...
That's a fair point.
...we hold them accountable to that. And I...
I didn't mean to ignore that.
I won't belabor it, but, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pete. I'm two, Hart House.
Mayor, I wanted to report, you know, last several meetings, I've just reported that we needed to put it off. It's probably time to actually update you and the public as to where we are on the Hart House issue. To reiterate a little bit, where we had been is that Hart House was about, which was owned by the First Baptist Church of Villarica, was about to be turned down due to the public outcry on that. Steps were taken whereby the First Baptist Church preserved the house. They, along with the Historical Society, took action to actually have the house moved to a location on the First Baptist Church property. The Hart House is still owned by the First Baptist Church of Villarica right now, on property owned by the First Baptist Church of Villarica. As we have gone along in this, the city was negotiating a process whereby the house would be, and the property on which it sits, would be transferred to the city, so that we could then work with the Historical Society to decide what to do with it after the city took possession of it. In exchange for that, the city was negotiating with the church to do, take such certain actions to reimburse the church for what all they had done to save the house and to donate the land to the city. During the last several months, and I can't speak for the First Baptist Church of Villarica at all, but from talking with their board of trustees, which I have been charged to do in this matter, the church is evaluating some other options on what to do with their property that might have some impact upon what they want to do with the property on which the Hart House sits. Now, my understanding is there's no final determination about that. The church is still pursuing different possibilities with regard to the use of that land that would include not transferring the Hart House to the city, so that the church or someone else would be using the Hart House. So for that reason, we have not attempted to finalize any agreement with the First Baptist Church through its trustees. I have been staying in touch with them, and at such point in time that they know for sure what is gonna happen with the property that has the Hart House sitting on it, that we would resume active negotiations with them on trying to make all of this come out in a fair and just way for all the parties. And that would include the city, the First Baptist Church of Villarica, and the Historical Society. I can't tell you what any final details on that would be, but it is fair to at least let the public know that this matter is not dragging on for no reason at all. It is dragging on because we're sort of in a state of flux as to knowing what the highest and best use of the Hart House might be for the future. And that is a decision at this point that lies within the power of the owner of the property and the house, which is the First Baptist Church. I want to be as clear as I can be that we're working very closely with them. I don't think there's any dispute. There are still issues and items they want to discuss for us to consider. There's still items and issues that we will need to know the answer to in the end, because the goal in all this has always been to make sure the Hart House doesn't get torn down. Whatever happens, that's a concern of the city, is that that house be preserved and not torn down, so all of this won't have been in vain. And they agree with that. So that's my update on where we are.
So really, the city's hands are tied. Until we hear something from the church that they want to move in a certain direction that would involve us, the ball is in their court. We can't do a thing at this point till we hear from them that they've made a decision of what they want to do with their property.
Yes, but I don't want it to come across as that they're stalling or delaying any of this. They're not. They're evaluating their options on doing what's the best for them, for the city, for the Hart House. So, and they've several different possibilities. It's not my place to even say what the church's possibilities are. That's up to them to announce that and decide what they want to do about it when they choose to. But to the extent that you're saying that we can't do anything now, yes, that's right. We can't do anything more until we know the answer as to what their decision on the use of the property is.
Any questions with David?
No, I think the update was, we'd already been provided with that update. That was mostly for the public. I'm satisfied with that update and where we're at.
Okay, I've got a few things on...
Also, just briefly, don't forget there's that wonderful little tab, "Report a Concern" on the city website. And you can just type in what it is, where it is, and give the information on it. You can request a response back and that sort of thing. And if for any reason it's not happening, you need to tell us. If somebody's not responding, or whatever, if it's not working for you, let us know. Because customer service needs to be important, right?
Absolutely.
Sounds like we're trying to wrap up, but we had other issues on here, and I want to put one more thing. I want to talk about one more thing, and that is a concern that's come to me over the last few weeks, and it's regarding signs in the Mirror Lake community. And I've learned a great deal about that, and it was very informative, and I've learned a good bit from the mayor and the city attorney and the chief of police. And I want each of these folks to be able to give us a little bit of history about why we are, where we are with those signs out there, and what we could do about it, and what would be prudent to do about it. So, Mr. Macklin, would you give us a little bit of history on those signs in the Mirror Lake community?
I can, and I'm doing most of this off the top of my head. But when Mirror Lake was built, the developers, in a marketing effort, wanted to have distinctive signs put out there that blended in with the landscape and the overall theme of the community. Most of the stop signs, you know, were wooden stop signs that were painted beige, I think, in the beginning. And they clearly did not meet state-required standards. At some point in time, a question was raised by the homeowners' association as to why the police department was not out issuing stop sign violations within the community for people that were running stop signs. And the response from the police and from the city was that we can't issue tickets for people running those stop signs, because those aren't legal stop signs. And because there is a state law that says that any and all traffic control devices must meet certain standards, and that those standards are set by the...
M-U-T-C-D.
Yeah, the M-U-C-T-B something or other, which is a pretty big book of standards, directions for signs. So, anyway, the homeowners' association wanted to correct that problem, and the homeowners' association, several years ago, said, "We will take the responsibility for replacing those signs. If you'll provide us with the required signs, we'll have them put up." And there was still a request by the homeowners' association to put those signs on the existing decorative sign poles, rather than having them just put on the metal sign poles that you'd see anywhere else within the city. And the city said, "Okay, we'll provide you with those legal signs." And we did, and they, the homeowners' association had them put up. We worked with them about how high the signs needed to be to be legal. And my belief is that those stop signs now are, for the most part, are legal stop signs. There may still be some within the community on side streets that are still the decorative illegal stop signs that the police don't have any ability to enforce. So that's my memory of the sign issue, on the speed limit sign, on the speed limit issue, because homeowners also are interested in having speed limits enforced out there. The city, in order to have permission to run radar, have to get those roads pre-approved by the state, that you can only run radar on certain streets. And I think many of the streets out there are not approved and probably can't be approved for running radar on, because they're, you know, short subdivision streets. There may be some that might qualify, but most of them no. So that's what my knowledge is.
So, okay, and I'm gonna ask the chief to speak in a minute, but I appreciate that, and it was very thorough, and actually hit some of the things that he was gonna say. And I guess the point I want to make is that it's not that they can't write some tickets on speeding and some things like that. I don't want to in any way give the public that impression. But what we're talking about is that, and chief, this is what I want you to talk about. Even if we update those signs, because I've had folks come to me and say, "Find the money," but what are we really talking about, even if we change those signs out there?
As Mr. Macklin said, there are... Has to be how far the distance we have to be visible from those signs. The speed limit, if we do update the signs, because I think some of the signs are at 24 miles per hour or something like that. But anyway, if we do... 24 miles per hour or something like that, but anyway, if we do... And Mr. Macklin said, most of these streets are not available to be put up because the state is so specific in the hills and the curves and the distances and stuff, that most of them are, and so it...
Thank you. So what I, the studies that I've seen, because your office has provided those studies, to me, the number is far less than 1%. It's a fraction of 1%. Now, safety is still a huge concern, so just because we might not do one thing, there are still other things we can do. Staff is looking at other traffic calming options, speed humps and those kinds of things. I just wanted the public to be aware that this is not something that we're not working on, it's not something that we, you know, it's not in our focus. We are, but we're limited by laws and, you know, just other things that slow us down. So that was my point. Anybody want to add anything else? I know Jeff knows a lot about it, the mayor. He's talked to me about it a lot as well.
Yeah, you know, the sign... I would just mention that you want to make sure that it's going to be effective if you're going to spend the money, but the same reason we've got these reports around the city with speeding, North Avenue, I mean, they just come from everywhere, Old Stone, is people not being good citizens, right? And we're trying to find a way to make them comply, and unfortunately, most of them don't care what the speed limit sign... Well, the reason I think that is because some cities in some locations, and you may heard of this in the last couple of years, decide that they will use speeding tickets as their fundraiser for cities, and so they... It makes sense sometimes when you hear the story behind it. I do...
Ain't a lot better if you're turning left, but the height is pretty significant.
Okay, any other city issues? Okay, Tabby?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think, I'm recommending that we go into executive session for two purposes, both of which I believe are short. I'm not going to promise that it's five minutes, because I lied last time, but I should believe they should be short. One, for the purpose of discussing or deliberating upon the employment compensation hiring of our public officer or employee, and so...